Good evening and thank you for joining us. We're going to call to order the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, August 10th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Ms. Autry?
Present.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
Thank you.
And if everyone could mute and we will do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We're going to open it up at this time for community and school reflections. I will keep an eye on the chat as well as your hands if I can, so please let me know if you'd like to jump in and share for community and school reflections. And if we have, oh, Ms. Autry.
Hi, I know we are going to be addressing it later on in the agenda, but I just wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge and thank the many, many, many folks who reached out to me, students, parents, families, coaches, etc., just in regards to the sports and extracurriculars. I know everyone's really passionate about it, and I just wanted to thank those folks and let them know that they've been heard, and I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Ms. Mansfield?
Actually, been a busy couple of APS weeks, which is lovely. First want to thank the Think Tank and Shark Tank Solutions. Dr. Akbar and I both got to attend part of that, and they presented problems and gave creative research solutions. They're students from all over the district. Also, the All Akron Student Engineering Program, we were invited to their closing ceremonies. That's part of the outreach with the city of Akron for their waterways renewed and their Akron Service Department. The students worked with 22 local companies to provide, they were provided with paid internships in many cases, and they were given the three E's of exposure to STEM careers, experience, and employment. And so, as usual, Dr. Halasa goes above and beyond. I call her a force of nature, and I'm not kidding. She was responsible and a guiding force for both of those programs. And also, want to thank the director for the second program, the engineering program, it's Dr. Jonathan Simmons, for their hard work and acknowledgement. The JCC held a fantastic conversation on racial justice, and on Saturday, I got the opportunity to go over to North High School where first serve out of Hudson, I believe it's the Congregational Church, I should have written that part down, has been volunteering all summer. I posted some great pictures, including one of our own Bruce Alexander. They are, were redoing the Sports Hall of Fame hallway at North, got to get nice and painted and dirty, helping out in the heat, and they were fantastic folks, and huge thanks to them. There's still opportunities to sign up if any students or people need service hours, that's still available. And I would echo what Diana said, the calls and passionate emails and messages have really touched my heart and just made it even more clear, if it wasn't already, how important school and the extracurriculars such as sports are to our community, not just our students and family, but to all of us. So, thanks for the time, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm a victim of technology. Dr. Akbar and then Dr. Hall, I think I saw you in that order. My apologies.
All right, so I want to do the same, just echo both Lisa and Diana's comments about all of the different people who have reached out about sports and sharing their concerns, passions, and desires, and I'll share more of my thoughts on that later, but I just want to say that some of the emails did definitely give me some things to think about, and was a little bit reminiscent, as I was, you know, I played sports in high school as well, so I kind of went down memory lane, reading some of the emails. And then, next, I also attended the Shark Tank, Think Tank event, and, you know, I say this all the time, but it is so true that our students, when we talk about coming up with innovative solutions for our next century's problems, our students definitely have them. Their presentations in many, in many cases were better than some professional presentations I've seen, and that is no lie. So, kudos to them. I think I saw all but the last group go. I had to leave right at the end, so apologize for that, but they were really amazing. The last thing I'll say is, there's a group of individuals who are really interested in expanding broadband access across the city, so I met with them and had a conversation about the impact that would have, not only on our students, but also our parents and them being able to work from home and a lot of things that happens now. For example, something as simple as applying for a job, it all happens online now. And so, really looking at how do we as a community expand broadband access across our city. So, that was a really good discussion, and I'm looking forward to many more of those. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Here I am. I'm doing it again. I'm saying your name, and I'm saying congratulations, and we're so glad you were able to join us this evening. Congratulations on the newest addition to your family, and please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. Yeah, so I was going to say, I was going to pause in advance, you know, if you hear a screaming baby in the background during portions of tonight's meeting, that just means that I have a lot of making up to do when the meeting's done tonight. So, yeah, so, yeah, we do have a new daughter, and so we are, we are very blessed and thankful. Mommy and baby are very healthy, so thank you for that, Mr. President. So, I think it's important as well, again, we echo the comments of Dr. Akbar and Ms. Autry and Ms. Mansfield and others around this, as it relates to the multitude of really thoughtful emails we've gotten, you know, as relates to many things, but most recently, you know, the sporting environment, and it's very, it's very clear, I think, to all of us at this point, how important this topic is. And, you know, I think that, you know, as we sort of, you know, sort of move this meeting along, and hopefully we'll be able to engage in some sort of thoughtful sort of dialogue that kind of demonstrates to the community amount of time and thought that each of us as individuals have put in to thinking about and taking into account their feedback, you know, in this process. And so, I just too want to echo those comments and say, I just, I really appreciate the time, and, you know, several of these emails were very lengthy emails. And so, again, we want to thank you for the time that you took to draft those emails in your free time on Saturdays and Sundays and things like that. So, we're just very appreciative of that, and just know that we're all doing our best to, you know, to take that feedback into account. So, yes, that's where, that's where I want to leave it. And again, just want to apologize to everybody who may be tuning in, if you hear a crying baby in the background. So, with that, I'll see the rest of my time. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I think that would be okay. We would, we would welcome that, and she's certainly welcome to join our meeting if she'd like. So, anyone else would like to share community or school reflections? All right, hearing none, I also just want to repeat the same thing. So many phone calls and emails and social media reach outs and talking to people out in the community, we appreciate all of the feedback, and I hope you know that we're, as you'll see later too, we're taking this discussion and approaching it as thoughtfully and as deliberately as we approached our discussion on restarting school. We hear you, we hear all of you, and we know that it's difficult, right? Because we've said before, it's hard to come up with a plan that's going to please 100% of the people 100% of the time. We're certainly going to do our best, though, to be thoughtful and deliberate about how we talk about it and whatever decision, final decision is made. So, thank you for that. And because I only have a very short report, because I know we want to get to some discussions, I'm just going to mention a couple of other things, and this will serve as my president's report as well. All of you should have received the evaluation information, so if you could please complete that, we're looking to try and get that turned in to the folks that I sent out to you by next Monday. So, if you could take a look at those and complete those, that would be great. I'll follow up with you next Monday, and then we'll be scheduling evaluation conferences for the superintendent and treasurer. You should have also received some board, preliminary board retreat information. Dr. Akbar and I are meeting tomorrow to try and finalize the agenda. We'll get that out to you as soon as we do have a finalized agenda. And then the last thing that I want to mention is that, just to recognize Mr. Pendleton, who was recently recognized by the Association of School Business Officials International, he received the prestigious 2020 Pinnacle of Achievement Award. I'm going to read this part so that I don't mess it up, but the Pinnacle Awards recognize school business officials' innovations and outstanding practices that result in significant contributions to their district and the profession of school business management. And so, we want to congratulate Mr. Pendleton for that outstanding award. It's amazing when you look around, not just the state, but around the country, and even in this case, the School Business Officials International, that, you know, our superintendent, assistant superintendent, our treasurer, and many of our senior staff continue to be recognized for their outstanding achievements locally, statewide, nationally, and even abroad. So, congratulations, Mr. Pendleton. Well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sure we're all clapping.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I know, I need some canned clapping and some canned laughter or something, so that I can play those at the appropriate time. All right, we do have a request to address the board, and I did look a second ago. I'm going to double check and make sure councilman is with us, but I do not see him. Do we, can someone confirm if he is there?
Mr. President, I do not see him.
Sean Smalek? No, I don't see his name. Councilman, if you're there, if you could unmute yourself and let us know? Okay. Well, we will see if he joins us at a later time during this meeting. This is a reschedule from the last meeting. We did confirm that he would be on, but I don't see him. So, if he joins us, we'll maybe carve out just a minute to allow him to address the board during this meeting in case there were technical difficulties. So, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes for July 27th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick and a second by Ms. Autry. Any comments, question or discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's recommendations, personnel? You're muted, Mr. Superintendent?
I was imitating you for a minute.
Don't want to do that.
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
Still no. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dr. Akbar, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the personnel recommendations? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21, and I would also like to point out the $23,000 grant from the Katherine and Edward A. Lozick Foundation is supporting our advanced manufacturing lab at Kimore Garfield High School. Also, a $30,000 grant from Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company to support supplies and materials, including hotspots that we would need for the start of school.
Thank you so much, and thank you to everyone that contributed. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda items?
Still no. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick and a second by Ms. Mansfield. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion, Ms. Mansfield?
Thank you. The superintendent stole two of those. I was going to mention those as well, so good on you for being on top of that. Those are wonderful donations. It's great to see our community involved. Also, wanted to say, Alair Homes for their donation over at the baseball fields at Firestone. They will be installing those on Saturday. Unfortunately, we'll be in the middle of a board retreat at that point, so we won't be able to stop by and say thank you, but thanks here as well. So many fantastic donations. Also, want to mention our partnership with the ADM Board and Jerry Craig, and thank them for their continued support for the mental health of our students. And I'm really excited to see with the expansion of the Advanced Quantitative Reasoning Course, which just saying that makes me, makes my head hurt. That just sounds amazing, but if there's anyone who could put together a fantastic program, it's Jenny Walls, and kudos to her for her work with the Ohio Department of Education to create that course, and for her continued brilliance as a teacher.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mansfield. Any other comments, questions, or discussion on the consent agenda, Ms. Autry?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Mrs. Mansfield mentioned regarding the Advanced Quantitative Reasoning Course. And for those that are listening who are just itching to have an advanced math course, what we're going to be voting on is that it's going to be expanded to all schools now, not just Firestone. So, I just wanted to mention that. So, anyone still working on their schedules, want to take advanced math, it'll be available district-wide now.
Fantastic. And who doesn't want advanced math, right? Anyone else with comments, questions, or discussion? Call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall? Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. And after we do business affairs, we did have two people join us, so after business affairs, if we could confirm while we're doing that, if one of them is the councilman. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to recommend approval of business affairs recommendations presented in category 23.
Thank you.
Still no.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick. Mr. Alexander, any comments, questions, or discussion on the business affairs agenda items?
Yeah, Mr. President, I actually have a couple of questions on this item. With respect to items 2315 and 2316, I just want to make sure I have a good understanding on sort of the process that we follow when we're determining, you know, the best professional development for our schools, so, and how do we arrive at that? So, for example, I'll use the 2316 with Robinson. So, what is that process like? So, do we actually engage the staff at Robinson CLC? Is there sort of, is there a process where we solicit the feedback of the teachers at the building?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Harrington to chime in on that one.
Yes. Good afternoon, President Bravo Board members. So, essentially, what happens in relation to professional development, this is all geared around our school quality improvement grant. That grant money came from the Ohio Department of Education specifically for leadership, leadership for administrators, teachers, and then also students. With regards to the input from the staff, before anything is sent to the board for approval, the building level team, teacher-based team, have a conversation about why this connects to their 90-day plan or their school improvement plan. From there, they create what's called a seven block, which is submitted to Mrs. Gijic's office to make sure that there's alignment with our curriculum and our district focus. If it's approved there, it then moves to Dr. McWilliam Woods for approval, Mrs. Adley Kelly if it's elementary, Mr. Black if it's secondary, and then the funding side of it, if it's coming from my department, then the approval there is what. Well, there is input at the building level before it moves all the way to the board, just to make sure that there's alignment with regards to their improvement plan and the things that they outlined in that 90-day.
So, yes, so, Mr. Harrington, appreciate that. So, for example, you know, who at the building level do we, are we getting feedback from? Is it the principal? Is there, is there a committee of teachers that building? Or are there, so, for example, the Office of School Improvement to Robinson, and we ask what their thoughts on and are, or do we, or do you sort of partner with Robinson and say, hey, you know, we've got this grant money, you know, here are our idea, you know, here are some ideas for professional development. What are your thoughts? I guess, I guess that's what I'm trying to drill down in, is really wanting to understand sort of, you know, sort of at the building level, who is it that we would typically engage inside the building?
I think you've actually answered it in all the varieties you just described. At times, us as the Office of School Improvement, we provide insight onto what professional development opportunities are out there within the state, and if we run in COVID, maybe outside of the state. At the building level, you have teacher-based teams, the PLTs that have conversations around what they are looking for. You also have the BLT or the Building Leadership Team, and then, of course, the administrative staff as well. But once again, as they identify if it is in alignment with what they're trying to achieve in the building, they create that seven block to show how it's going to connect and the things that they may need to improve on from the Office of Teaching and Learning, Office of School Improvement, and then the executive director as well. So, I think it's a multitude of aspects. It could come from us as sharing, but just because we share doesn't mean that they will want that, because it may not be in alignment with their plan, it may be in alignment with somebody else's plan. But I think it just, it just varies on what's out there and what they find and what we find, and then having those conversations about the alignment aspect of it, and if it physically sounds.
Great. I appreciate that. And again, you know, you know, kind of the theme of a lot of my questions, as you're probably noticing, is, are, I'm really trying to just ensure that, you know, and just encourage, you know, a high degree of sort of collaborative and, you know, collaborative and, you know, sort of, you know, great sort of collegial sort of rapport with our teachers in the buildings, you know, those folks who are actually, you know, doing, doing this work at the ground level and making sure that we've got, you know, their feedback on what they think is best as well, and hopefully come into a meeting of the minds with you all in the Office of School Improvement. Thank you for that. My, my second question was in relation to, and I think we talked about this at the last board meeting, was with regard to the costs, and I see that there's language here now that sort of calls out that this is virtual professional development. Thank you for that. And so, I know that we talked about that there was some negotiation that was still going on. So, do these costs reflect the, you know, the lower rate, you know, that we talked about last time, so reflective of the fact that it's not going to be in person and that it's virtual?
Yes. In actuality, when we reached back out to form, when they were able to share with us that their virtual cost actually was more than the face-to-face cost, but we still explained to them at this time, you know, being a good partner, we were looking for some assistance, maybe discounts, because we have so many buildings participating, either in teacher clarity, teacher efficacy, or variety. So, what they were able to do was give us discounts for each building, and I think that was shared with board members. If not, I can get that to you. And then that brought the cost down by $29,300.
Fantastic, fantastic. Well, listen, thank you for that, for that, for that feedback and for that very descriptive and robust response. I appreciate it.
No problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or discussion on the business affairs agenda items? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we did get messages from Councilman Malek, who said that he was trying to join, but he was unable to. He did want to pass along his thanks and appreciation to the board for their thoughtful consideration of the Dave Marshall Field netting, and that he thinks that the solution put together by our district athletic director, Joe Vassalati, and Todd Fithwater and others will resolve the safety issue that's been there for a number of years. So, he just wanted to pass along those thanks, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate him for reaching out, and we apologize for any technical issues he may have been having during the meeting. We were trying to allow him to actually join this meeting, and there may have been some issues. So, I'm very concerned, and we appreciate you, and we appreciate you. Thank you so much. With that, superintendent's report?
A couple of items I'll turn over to staff on updates regarding our reopening recovery teams. One is our schedule for returning to school, which will be actually under unfinished business, but also on the status of how the school day will look for our students as we bring them back. And I believe Rachel Tecca is covering that.
Thank you, Dr. James, and our Akron Board of Education members. I've had the privilege of being able to work collaboratively with our teachers and administrators across the district to clear and stick schedules so that our families and our students are confident in the daily schedule of learning for our students. Many of the RRAP team members have worked collaboratively over the last two weeks to share an elementary version, a middle school version, as well as a high school version. It kind of outlines the instructional day for our students K to 12. So, it's been a very collaborative process, and we're excited to start to communicate that out this evening.
Thank you. And I wasn't sure if Mrs. Gijic had any updates on items that she may be involved in.
No, I believe Mrs. Tecca handled it all. Thank you.
One issue did come up, board members, and that has to do with verifying attendance. There was a law that was passed a year and a half ago in regards to a student in Cleveland who met an unfortunate end on her way to school. So, we've adapted our plan to make sure that attendance is taken both in the morning and in the afternoon, and that for kids who aren't present for their virtual classes, there will be calls made to the home as required by Ohio revise code in the Department of Education. That's just one of the many things that we have to look at as we continue to put our plans together.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any comments, questions, or discussion for the superintendent? All right, treasurer's report?
Good evening. I'd like to defer my
I'd like to defer my report and partner with the Finance Committee during their presentation.
Thank you so much. Committee reports legal contracts and board policy?
Okay, uh, we met, uh, last, uh, Tuesday, and we had a, a good agenda and we did a lot of work, it was good discussion. Uh, we did, we had a, uh, good amount of questions that were asked and, uh, we, we had a very good meeting. Uh, basically, and I'm going to just touch on a couple of things and Dr. Akbar is going to touch on others. One of the biggest items which, uh, we had discussed, uh, was Title IX regulations. And this is, uh, regulations from a new discrimination on the basis of sex in district program or activities. And this is for staff as well as students. Uh, and we will, we will look at getting training for all of us as well, uh, for, for staff, uh, as well as some other individuals who will be in party to various, uh, departments. Uh, this is basically, uh, geared towards sexual harassment and, and things of that nature. So that there's no discrimination against, uh, anyone when it comes to, uh, uh, harassment. And we also, uh, found out and was told that it is, is considered a fair and unbiased process and is, is more transparent than previous. So there'll be more transparency when it comes to, to dealing with this, this policy and these, these type of, uh, issues. Um, there will be, as I mentioned before, a core group of people who will be getting trained. Uh, there were administrators, there're going to be human resources, there're going to be, uh, student services. There'll probably be some other staff from various departments. There may be some other people that we bring in possibly from the community as well to get trained in this area. So that they understand what's going on, uh, and they can be able to, uh, understand and be part of the process. So it's fair and unbiased as well. And then the main thing with this here is this, this is a policy that, uh, we, we were kind of, it was kind of pushed on us to a certain extent, uh, really fast that we had to have it done by this week. And therefore, since our board meeting is tonight, we will have to, uh, when we get to this point, uh, waive the three readings. We'll ask to waive the three readings so we can get this passed in order to have it in place, uh, by this week, which is when they requested it be in place. Now, uh, it was, I had asked a question in reference to this policy being what they want us to have. Is there a possibility of having some amendments done? Uh, it will say, yes, if we, any areas of this here that we may want to amend, there are some areas that we can amend, but some areas we cannot amend. And so, uh, Diane Fido will advise us to possibly, if we need, if we want to make some amendments to this here, that what we, what we can make amendments to and where, and, and we will, we will move for that. So this is a, was a very, uh, uh, very good policy, but I think it's something that, you know, I wanted all board members, Dr. Akbar and I, wanted all board members to also possibly get a copy of this so you can look at it as well. That way, if you have any questions, uh, you can ask in reference to that. Uh, we also had a, uh, some Niola updates. And we have a new process, uh, which I think is going to be really nice. And it'll be nice for not just us as a committee, but it'll be also good for the board members. And this is also, uh, it's a list of all the policies. Who, who are the staff that are responsible for these policies? And maybe the people they have underneath them who will possibly be, uh, need to have their input and with these policies. And we'll continue to move forward as we do by bringing this to the Policy Committee, looking at these things and also making sure that board members are aware of these policies. But we did also request as well, Dr. Akbar and I, that, uh, all board members receive a copy of this as well. So everyone can see what the process, the new process is, as well as all the policies that we will possibly be looking at and who the administrative, uh, individuals are, administrative staff who will be responsible for various policies. Dr. Akbar?
Um, yes, so, uh, that was, those were the new topics that we discussed. Uh, we did, um, have some follow-up conversations on the racial equity policy. Uh, so that is something that we discussed. Um, Diana Fido, uh, prepared for us some example, uh, policies, uh, that we, uh, you know, sent in last, the last meeting, as well as some additional ones that she found. Um, she did notice that there wasn't any racial equity policies in the state of Ohio. So, um, us exploring that would make us one of the first. Um, in addition to that, our, uh, Bruce, Mr. Alexander and I, uh, both felt that two policy, uh, two policies stood out that we wanted to try to model, and that was the St. Paul, Minnesota, uh, racial equity policy and the Jefferson County, Kentucky, um, policy. Um, so we wanted to look at those and blend those. Um, we're basically taking a stab at it and so we'll have something for our next meeting to, a draft. So, um, looking forward to that first draft and, um, moving that forward as well. Uh, again, we are looking at the naming policy, uh, for facilities and we would like to have that done by, uh, September. Um, so we would like that every board member, please look at that policy and make any suggestions. To date, we haven't received any new updates. Um, and we, we feel like it's still somewhat incomplete. So we're waiting to hear back from some administrators as well on that. Um, and then last but not least, uh, we followed up about, uh, employee resource groups and we'll be having a report out from Carla Chapman and/or Dr. Erica Glover, uh, at our next meeting around the survey that they put out to staff, um, for ERGs and what their thoughts are on that to guide us as we begin to work on that policy as well.
Thank you so much. So I believe at this time you are looking for a motion to waive the three reading requirement on policy 2266?
Yes, that is correct.
Can we pause for just a moment? We lost Dr. Akbar. If we could wait just a moment.
All right, um, looks like I got booted out somehow. Um, I'm not sure, did you hear everything I said or was it like I started talking and then I got?
No, we, we heard everything.
Okay, so that was the end of my report?
Thank you. We're all subject to the whims of technology. Um, I had mentioned, I think at this point, that you are then looking for a motion from the board for a waiver of the three reading requirements on policy 2266, uh, regarding non-discrimination on the basis of sex. So we will entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Autry and a second from Ms. McKittrick. And are there any comments, questions, or discussion on that item? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now we'll entertain a motion on the approval of policy 2266 on non-discrimination policy on the basis of sex.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from this, Dr. Akbar and a second from Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call please.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Finance and Capital Management?
Thank you. I'll go ahead and, uh, start off. So this past Friday, the Finance Committee did meet. Um, and also invited to that meeting was the Reopening Recovery Finance and Grant Committee. Um, so I just wanted to, and appreciate them. It's always nice to have, uh, that perspective. So, uh, you know, our, we reviewed, uh, district-wide financial information, um, including just a reminder, um, that the district is facing a $14 million deficit. Um, and without a levy, uh, this fall, um, we're going to have to find ways to balance the books uh, with the least amount of impact to the students. So, um, there was discussion around that as well as the, uh, three, uh, different funds that we are currently utilizing to kind of help us through, uh, this, uh, current situation. And I will defer to Derek, who will go into a little bit more detail about those three different funds that we're currently using.
Yeah, fantastic. Thanks, Ms. Autry. Um, yeah, so as many of you that, that are, you know, listening to this, um, you know, we can get really in the weeds when we're in our finance committee this conversation. So I think part of the goal in these updates, uh, is to try to make this as palatable as, as possible to the, you know, to the layperson that may be listening and tuning in. So to Ms. Autry's point, um, you know, you know, there are, you know, there are a, a number of sort of federal dollars, really, really federal pots of money, if you will, um, that have become available to us, um, you know, in this time of COVID. Um, you know, so, you know, there, there are SIR funds, CARES 2.0 funds, CARES Act 3.0 funds. And really, you know, the important takeaways for this is that each of these pots of money, um, you know, has a varying dollar amount. So one pot of money is $7 million, you know, the second is $1.2 million. There's a third pot that's to be determined yet. And each of these pots of money, um, you know, have various restrictions on what you can and can't spend, um, money on. And also, and there are also timing requirements. And so, for example, you know, the SIR funds, um, you know, which we had $10 million to start, seven, seven million of which now remains, those funds must be spent by September 30th of 2022. Uh, the second pot of money, the CARES 2.0 funds, must be spent by December 30th, 2020. Um, you know, there's a third pot where those funds must be spent by December 31st, 2020. Um, you know, and so, uh, and so again, you know, one of the things that, that we're really working to do is to make sure that the appropriate items being bought or end or rebated, you know, per the appropriate pot of money. Um, and obviously, you know, we want to make sure that we're using all the funds that are available to us, even if that means repurposing, um, certain items, you know, for certain buckets to make sure that, again, you know, we're taking full advantage, you know, of all the federal dollars, um, that are being, um, that are being allocated to us as well. Um, yeah, I think some other highlights to share would be, uh, as Ms. Autry mentioned, you know, we had the Recovery, um, and Reopening Committee folks with us as well, uh, which I, which I thought added really kind of, really added a nice, uh, nice flavor, a nice variety to, to our conversation. So again, I want to echo Ms. Autry's comments and thanking them for joining us for that, um, for that meeting. Uh, and again, you know, really sort of, you know, some of the other highlights, the current forecast with the, with, with the full committee, um, you're really, really showing, uh, what, what we've been talking about in previous board meetings, which is, you know, we, you know, we are going to have a, you know, an overall negative cash balance by fiscal year 2023, which starts July 1st, uh, of 2022. Um, for those of you keeping track at home, right now we're in fiscal year 2021. So again, we're not, fiscal years are not always, so again, we started at first. And so for this fiscal year, you know, to sort of address million-dollar deficits, Ms. Autry mentioned. Um, and so, uh, as she also mentioned, you know, we're looking at the various account line items that we can, um, you know, be, be dialing down into to, you know, to try to, you know, save, you know, some of those additional funds. And so some, some examples of that are getting at sort of new buses this year or do we, or do we forego that we're just in wait till, you know, uh, the next fiscal year? Um, you know, we're looking at how do we repurpose textbook purchases to support online learning? Um, you know, we look at, you know, how would we, um, sort of reallocate potentially, you know, the management of certain general service fund, uh, items, you know? And so, and, and thinking about how that would impact, um, you know, uh, you know, folks on those teams. Um, you know, also too, we talked a lot about, um, you know, the, uh, the reductions that could be made, um, or realized, um, while the district is, is holding, um, virtual learning, you know? So, so, you know, um, so there are some savings that could come that, that, that could help to sort of trim down our budget as well. Um, you know, and so, um, so, so, you know, I think in the long run, you know, it was, it was a good meeting. We had a, a number of good questions that were asked. Um, you know, and so, uh, I think Mr. Householder in, in particular, uh, you know, asked a good question about the impacted, uh, if students were to return to school prior to January. So recall, you know, what we've proposed thus, thus far is that we would wait, um, nine weeks, really approximately one grading period, uh, before we would, um, sort of reassess whether or not students would, would return to school in person. Um, you know, so obviously that's, that, that would be prior to January. So, so he had a good question around, well, what does that look like, uh, if we were, you know, returned prior to January? So, uh, and really, you know, the answer that, that we talked about was making sure, um, that, well, really stating that, that the district could only support, you know, um, you know, the number of students that the industry would itself support. So, so there are a number of sort of variables, you know, whether it's staffing, um, you know, uh, you know, you know, there's some sort of building-related issues as, as well, online items, you know, expenses that we'd have to make sure that we, um, you know, had, you know, had in place to support that as well. Um, Autry asked a question. So for example, you heard me say earlier on, you know, that, um, that our cash balances get progressively negative as we move, you know, into the next, you know, several fiscal years. And by, by fiscal year 2023, which will be starting July 1st, 2022, uh, at that point in time, if, if we're not able to pass the levy, um, you know, at that point in time, we'd be looking at, um, you know, the, uh, you know, the state entity, uh, the Ohio Department of Education, you know, potentially moving in and having much more of a direct say where basically their decision-making would supersede that of the local community board. Um, you know, where they would take a much more robust role in determining, uh, sort of what, where, where our funds are, are allocated, what things are spent, what cuts are, are not made. Uh, so clearly, you know, uh, we want to, you know, avoid, avoid coming to that. But it was important that Ms. Autry asked a question because again, you know, um, you know, we, we, we want the community, you know, to understand that, you know, while we made a decision to, now for very good reasons, um, you know, and we wholeheartedly support those reasons as, as a finance committee, um, that eventually though, um, you know, we're, we're, we're going to need to pass the levy um, or things could get really dire the next year or two, um, as relates to, um, our public school system. So, so I, I think that's, uh, I think, I think that's a fair synopsis of, of the last meeting. Um, and, um, and I'll leave it there. So thank, thank you, Ms. Autry. Thank you, Mr. Pedali.
Thank you. Uh, comments, questions, uh, or discussion, uh, for the Finance Committee? I know just on, uh, my personal note, here's hoping too, that with recent changes in the Ohio House, that maybe we can pick up conversations on House Bill 305 again, uh, and move forward with the Fair School Funding Plan that might help all districts, uh, right now. Any comments, questions, discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Instructional policy and student achievement?
I don't have anything, Mrs. Mansfield. Now report.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, under unfinished business, then we do have the Corwin Press items in category 29. So, Mr. Superintendent, are you then looking for final approval on those items?
On items number, uh, 29.1 through 29.11, those are the items that were pulled off of the last board meeting's agenda. So they appear here under unfinished business. And I believe Kenya Harrington, um, explained the reduction, including the, uh, explanations also in the Dear Board Member letter, which was sent out and is attached in the agenda.
Thank you so much. So then do we have an, uh, motion for approval of the items through 29.11 for the Corwin Press?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Alexander, a second by Ms. McKittrick. Any comments, questions, or discussion on those items? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Dr. Akbar?
Sorry. Sorry. Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And item 29.12, 13, and 14, Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, so, um, item 29.12 is really the, um, letter that explains the school calendar revision as we go to more of a phased-in approach, um, starting on September 9th and ending through September 14th. I like to point out, um, based on a question from Mrs. Mansfield, uh, pre-K starts on, uh, September 14th as well. So it's pre-K, kindergarten, and grade one. And, um, 29.13 is the resolution that actually captures those changes. And then under 29.14 is the, um, our proposed use for our proposed use for calamity days if we need to use them this year.
And so, for formal approval, we need a motion on item number 29.13, which is Resolution 2020-2021 School Calendar Revision due to COVID-19 and district-wide remote instruction. So we're looking for a motion on that.
So move. Second.
Thank you. A motion by Dr. Akbar and a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the school calendar? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, as we get to new business, we are considering the delay. There's a resolution in front of the board to consider the delay of school athletic competitions and extracurricular activities at various sites for the opening of the 2020-21 school year. And so, I'm going to hand it over to the Superintendent, and then we'll open it up for discussion. If you'd let me know in the chat or by email, but of course, chat is better. And I see people are already starting to line up. If you'd like to make comments, let me know. And again, for the public that's watching and paying attention, please know that we're approaching this very thoughtfully and very deliberately. There's no shortage of people who have reached out on both sides of this issue, particularly as it pertains to athletics, in-person, and contact sports, no contact, low-to-medium, and high-contact sports. There's no shortage of folks that have reached out to us on both sides of this issue. We've seen it as recently as today, Saturday, this weekend with the MAC, and today with the vote becoming public for the Big Ten, how collegiate sports is starting to look at athletics. So, but we also know that our kids, we hear you, and our kids deserve and need something. But we have to make a decision, and we need to have a discussion about that. So thank you for joining us. At this point, then, Mr. Superintendent, do you want to open up the conversation? And then, in line right now, after you're finished, we will hear from our board.
Yeah, so first, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Vassalati and thank him and two teams of people met to discuss what they felt were guidelines for restarting both contact sports and non-contact sports. And so, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vassalati at this time.
Thank you, Dr. James, members of the board. I appreciate the time tonight. It's obviously a popular and somewhat controversial issue, left up to individual districts to decide about athletics with no statewide initiatives. So, all along through the summer, through our workouts, which we've been allowed to conduct, our Phases 1, 2, and 3, we've been consulting Summit County Public Health for guidance, protocols, and gradually increase the intensity of our workouts based on those guidelines. You know, our student athletes benefit so much from athletics. It's an education-based practice of athletics, and that's what the OHSA believes in. But the way things have been evolving through the summer, there seems to be a lack of equity with districts having to make individual decisions. So I was on a call with the Ohio Eight today, the ADs from the Ohio Eight, and we were talking about that. Some districts are kind of the outside looking in as far as surrounding districts have the sports, and theirs doesn't. The Cleveland Athletic Directorship, they lost 22 student athletes to a private school up there just within the last week. So, you know, the benefits of extracurriculars in general, not just athletics, but marching band and everything that goes along with extracurriculars, are life-all terrain, the role models are student athletes. And other students received from their extracurricular coaches and teachers are tremendous, the life lessons they learn. The latest from Summit County Public Health, as far as recommending sports, as you have seen, involves contrast of low-risk versus high-risk sports. So in terms of low-risk, Summit County Public Health has recommended they move forward as the OHSA guidance has allowed. But with the high-risk sports, which for us would be soccer, football, and cheerleading, Summit County Public Health recommends waiting until October 1st for competition and allowing practice to that time, but not competing against other schools until October 1st. As an example of how convoluted the issue has become, the OHSA actually is allowing, through their guidance, contact sports, high-risk sports to begin as scheduled in late August. So kind of pit the county health departments versus what's coming from Columbus. Things get confusing, but I want to thank the board for their thoughtful consideration of this issue. I know I've received a lot of calls and texts and emails from, you know, not only our coaches, but parents and some of our student athletes as well. I was happy to share those with you through Dr. James. So thank you. I'm certainly here to answer any questions anyone has. And I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, anything else before we would open it up for questions?
Right. So the resolution that I prepared, which of course, based on discussion, can be changed, really dealt with, you know, with our remote start and then looking at even as early as today Summit County held a press, Summit County Health held a press conference and released, you know, another letter. Their preferred option, their lowest risk, they feel for disease spread of courses, all schools start remotely. And then they offered a recommendation, their same one that Mr. Vassalati referred to, was to delay the fall contact sports until October 1st. One thing I did discuss with senior staff this morning, and I'm looking to get some additional information on is, and not just for sports, but all of our extracurriculars. There are some issues with, you know, we need to consider bands, orchestras, and choirs. There's a lot of information out there about spread of COVID with those activities. Actually, the National Superintendents Association put out a graphic today listing some of those areas as high-risk. But I think we need to figure out, are there ways that we could even take some of our clubs and make them virtual, you know? Could a chess club be virtual? So it's a lot more than just our sports. There's a lot of other activities that I think our kids enjoy. And I, you know, we need to figure out how we're going to be able to do all of those. But getting back to sports, so that's, the resolution would delay sports until at least October 1st. And then I think the question that I'm looking for, some guidance from the board is whether you want to make a consideration for non-contact sports or even low-risk, low-contact sports versus contact sports.
Thank you so much. And as we get ready to open it up for questions, we have Ms. McKittrick, Mr. Alexander, Ms. Mansfield, Dr. Hall, and Ms. Autry. And I'd like to start with just a quick question. And this is either for the Superintendent or Mr. Vassalati. How should the board reconcile what we see as conflicting guidance from our public health agency and OHSA, particularly in light of how we're starting to see even collegiate sports begin to handle the athletic, the question of athletics? And so, if you could help us figure out how we should approach and reconcile sort of what seems to be at least conflicting guidance. And Mr. Vassalati, before you even answer, let me say, first of all, if there's anyone that I wouldn't want to be right now after a board member or the superintendent or the treasurer, it is certainly your position. So thank you for everything that you do. And we know right now is a very difficult time. But as we start to formulate our questions and our thoughts and give you our feedback, how do we reconcile what seems to be conflicting information? This is a global health pandemic. And so, the polls seems, would seem to be, let's listen to our public health agencies, but we also have some other folks that are saying, but we can do things safely. So how do we, how should we reconcile that?
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. So all along, we've been listening to Summit County Public Health. And I'll certainly refer to Dr. James here for his thoughts. But, you know, I see high school sports, education-based athletics, as different than college, especially the big-time Division 1 college athletics, and certainly professional sports, who are very much driven by finances. And certainly, that's part of our equation, but not our primary driving force. And the potential benefit for us of having some type of fall athletic program by following Summit County Public Health's guidance is that we have, for example, with football, the potential to play a city series schedule beginning October 1st and, you know, keep our teams within the city so they're not traveling very far. The only exception to that would be for a playoff game, which the OHSA now has included the second week of October for all Ohio High School football teams don't have to qualify. So that would be the lone exception, traveling outside the city. We're comfortable with our protocols. Our teams have been practicing them all summer. We've had a few positive tests of student athletes. Those have been contained to one athlete per team in four occasions. We follow protocols, and in each case, it seems that it was contracted from the outside and not within the team itself, which we haven't had a large outbreak. As I said before, the benefits for our student athletes of athletics are tremendous, the life lessons they learn. And I know a lot of them are anxious to compete, especially our seniors. So I would see, speaking of, what we're getting from the medical and scientific community, we've been following all summer. I've thanked everyone providing us updates regularly from Summit County Public Health. We're very cautious that way. And we see what's going on in not only the state of Ohio, but the world around us with different activities being shut down or delayed. And we certainly understand that. We feel our teams and student athletes could handle this. Our low-risk sports, golf and tennis and cross country and volleyball, according to Summit County Public Health, have been practicing hard, and in some cases, competing in golf and tennis. And they'd love to continue that. Volleyball and cross country, we start the third week of August with the competition, and they're very anxious to do that. And we certainly understand our high-contact, high-risk sports late until October 1st. Even if that's the case, with soccer, football, and cheerleading, having abbreviated season will certainly be much more beneficial than a postseason following. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll open it up for comment. Ms. McKittrick is on line first.
Thank you, President Bravo. Good evening, everyone. As always, I'd like to thank all those who contacted me on a variety of occasions, including our remote learning plan, our start dates, and of course, athletics, extracurricular activities. As with many of the decisions of late, the decision to begin, postpone, or cancel these activities is indeed a difficult one. As a retired teacher, I know very well that sports and extracurricular activities allow many students to excel. For those who struggle academically, these activities provide them an opportunity to shine. For some, they may in fact be pathways to careers. Again, though, I must consider not just the student athletes, but the coaches, spectators, personnel, and families of all those involved. Because even though the student athletes may be young and healthy, the people living in their households may not be. For the same reasons I supported remote learning for the first nine weeks and the recommendations of Summit County Public Health, I support postponing athletics and extracurricular activities until then as well. In light of the coronavirus pandemic, I hope student athletes, parents, coaches, and all involved understand this to be a reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick, for those comments. Mr. Alexander is next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank all the parents, the coaches, and the community members for their interest and their input for sports and athletics in Akron Public Schools. As we know, sports is very important to a lot of people. Also, I want to thank Mr. Vassalati and his staff and his team for working hard, because this is not an easy time for them at this point in time, trying to make the decision of what do we do for our young student athletes. But as an ex-athlete myself, you know, I understand how important sports is. It was very important to me. It carried me a long way. And I think that's very important for our student athletes, you know? And I wish that the Ohio High School Athletic Association would have given us more concrete guidance to follow in order to help us make a good decision for our student athletes, you know? But one of the things, the two things that are very, very important to me is the safety and the health of all of our kids, not just our students, but our student athletes as well. And it's important that we make sure that they stay healthy. I'm willing to listen to anybody who has any other options that would be good for our students and would be beneficial to help move with athletics forward. But we also have to understand that we are professionals in one area and different areas, but the medical people are the professionals in making these decisions right now for the health and welfare of not just our student athletes, but the parents, the households, and their community. So I am going to base my vote and my decision on the safety and the health of everyone. And so, Mr. President, I will wait until it's time to vote and make my vote. But I want the public to know that we do realize that sports is very important and play a role in the lives of a lot of students. But we also have to think of the safety of everyone. So I want everyone out there to remember the safety and the health of all our kids, because I would hate to have a kid who has the virus or not knowing they have the virus to pass it to another kid. They pass it to someone else. And then we talked about before, the 2,300 kids that we have in the district who may have some type of respiratory problem, asthma, and things of that nature, who could possibly get that and possibly have a tragedy? I don't want that to happen. So I hope everyone realizes and understands what we're trying to do is very important, not just for our student athletes, but for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Alexander. Ms. Mansfield?
So this has been another tough one. Lots of lost sleep for so many of us. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Vassalati, I appreciate all of your input. I want to start out first and kind of chastise the Ohio School Athletic Association. I am extremely disappointed with the, with their ignoring their chances early on to even look at flipping seasons like other states have done surrounding us. For example, Pennsylvania, Virginia, I believe it's Illinois, who's another one that has putting sports that are less contact, you know, that have been successful all summer at the forefront of our seasons. They could make that happen with one stroke of the pen, where we would all be not having to face as many difficult situations as we're facing now with that. For the last three weeks, the governor's office has said they're going to address sports. And for the last three weeks, that hasn't happened. Now, he does say he's going to talk about schools tomorrow. So heads up, we all just got an email from Rick Lewis telling us that they are going to talk more about schools tomorrow. But we can only hope that they would make a decision that would impact all of our students and not just think about just the rural areas or just the suburban areas. The urban districts that have higher incidents and population need to be considered by these areas as well. Or let us go on our own and let us make plans with other districts. Set us free from the restrictions that they have so that we can do that. Allowing private schools to cherry-pick students during this time and allowing them to play for private schools, you know, I understand for the students. So I can't, you know, be angry at them for doing that. But putting us in a position where students are forced to make those choices and leave so that they can go and play somewhere else is just unconscionable from the Ohio School Athletic Association. While we're at it, I want to make sure that we separate arts programming and as an extracurricular, and arts programming as classes. and as an extracurricular and arts programming as classes. We do have classes that are academic and part of the school day that are part of our college and career academies, for example, that are arts programming. So we want to make sure that we're not taking away. I know it's not easy to do arts in this environment. I've got hundreds of friends who are out of work right now who work in the arts. So I understand that, but I want to make sure we're separating the extracurricular of arts out from the academics of it. And there are ways even for that extracurricular piece to take place virtually. So I would encourage us to continue to look at those possibilities. Theater performances, musical performances are going on online. And thank goodness, because what would we do if we didn't have those things to watch? I'm sorry, I'm going to be a little long-winded tonight because I had to write all this down. I also want us to be continued to committed, being committed to not painting any of our programs with one brush, with a broad brush, and looking at hard ways that maybe we could keep the training going that's been going on so that our coaches, who've managed to do such a good job safely, can continue their outreach and connection to our students, encouraging them academically and encouraging them with life skills. I know that Mr. Alexander will tell his coaches and what a difference they made in his life. He's done that many times in our board meetings. And there are so many advantages to those connections. We just don't want to lose that. I wonder at the sports that we could all go out and do on any given day, right? We can go out for a run. We can maybe go knock a tennis ball around in the park. We can, I'm not a golfer, but people do go golfing and have been doing throughout the pandemic. Even back in March, there were people, golf courses that remained open. And oh, gosh, there was one. Oh, and swimming, a very individual sport. You're in a lane, you can, you can distance that way. So those are just a few that we can, that I can point to, that if we can find safe ways for them to at least train and possibly following the guidelines of our Summit County Public Health, find a way for them to do what you and I could go do in the park right now, if at all possible. Trying to make sure I covered all my scribbles here. I think that's it for now, Mr. President. I appreciate the long-windedness tonight, but it's, I'm very passionate about these things. The arts and athletics and these, these are our carrots, right? These are our, these are things we all remember from school. We remember our academics fondly, sure, but we remember the time we spent with each other and with our colleagues outside of school as well. So whatever we can manage to do safely, I hope that we do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Want to start by appreciating the earlier conveyed sentiments of my board colleagues. Want to appreciate Mr. Vassalati's also his commentary as well. I do have a couple of clarification questions to sort of open my, I guess, my part of this. So in looking through the reading of the resolution, from a language standpoint, I noticed that it says delay of athletic sporting events. You know, are we, so with this resolution, would we be allowing students to continue to practice contact sports, for example, football, soccer, things like that? Or would we be, or would this resolution also prevent that from happening as well? That's my first question.
The way it's written, it would not allow that, but we could absolutely change that based on the board's desire to change that. I just put it together based on most of the, you know, health guidance out there that I've seen, including some of the items from Summit County Public Health.
Got you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, so thank you for that. Because, yeah, so that's why I asked the question, because, you know, to me, sort of logically, you know, it would not, in my opinion, make sense to allow students to be practicing football, you know, for example, as well. I mean, so, you know, I mean, the risks are what they are. So that's why I wanted, so again, that's why I wanted to make sure that we were including practices when we set sporting events as well. So basically delaying the practices as well. So thanks for that clarification. I do think, so, you know, and these are public board meetings and open to discussion and comment. And I do think it's important, you know, to tease out the nuance, because again, I wouldn't be doing my job as a community-elected board member with the feedback I've already gotten from people if we don't at least have a conversation distinguishing contact from non-contact. So, you know, so my position is very clear on contact, but I do think we owe it to folks who may be tuned in and those who have emailed us about the non-contact part and to, you know, sort of talk a bit about why we're including non-contact solution as well. So those are folks who are playing golf, you know, would be some tennis, you know. And granted, this isn't the season for those sports necessarily, tennis, for example. But again, I think it's important to sort of talk through that. And I would love to kind of hear from Mr. Vassalati or my board colleagues if they've got feedback on that nuance, you know, really explaining those who may be tuned in, you know, why we, you know, why we're considering non-contact sports as a part of this resolution. And again, I've got more to say, but I wanted to tease out the nuance between contact and non-contact and ensure that there was a public conversation about the non-contact piece.
Thank you, Mr. Vassalati or Mr. Superintendent. The question is, why are we including non-contact or low-contact sports in the resolution?
All right. I'll let Mr. Vassalati talk about the plan that I think they wanted to allow the non-contact sports to continue with safety guide.
Yes, thank you, Dr. James. And Dr. Hall, that's an excellent question. And like a lot of issues during this time, it's been confusing because right now, according to Summit County Public Health and the OHSA, the sports of golf, tennis, cross country, and volleyball, either low contact, which is the terminology that Vassalati uses, or low risk, medium risk, which is Summit County Public Health's lingo. What has been confusing for us through the summer is that for much of the summer, cross country was labeled a high-contact sport by the OHSA, and that just recently changed. To contrast that, Summit County Public Health considered volleyball for much of the summer to be higher risk. And that changed. So at least now they're all on the same page. But we felt moving forward this fall, based on Summit County Public Health's latest guidelines, which is on our athletics update page now, was from August 5th last week, they do consider the low-risk sports. And again, that would be golf, tennis, cross country, volleyball, all to be able to move forward, not only practice, but have competition. So that was part of our thought, part of our proposal, is that since we've been following the guidance of Summit County Public Health throughout the summer, that we continue to do that now and propose allowing our low-risk, low-contact sports, those four, to continue seasons as scheduled in their competitions as scheduled. And along those same lines, then we follow the guidance of Summit County Public Health to wait for our contact sports to compete until October 1st. Now, I should say Summit County Public Health is a topic that practice came up earlier. Summit County Public Health is not banning practice for contact sports. And they're saying practice within your team is okay, because you're within the, you're with the same people every day at practice. You can have a scrimmage within your team. But they're just advising no competition with other schools, be it a scrimmage or a regular season contest until October 1st. If the board sees fit to allow our contact sports to compete beginning October 1st with other schools, then we would certainly need some preparation time for them to practice for soccer, football, cheerleading, to practice, you know, prior to a regular season contest so that they're physically ready to play. So I hope that clarifies the low-contact versus high-contact, high-risk.
No, actually, actually, you know, I think I'm more confused. This is why I wanted to ask the question. So, you know, because, and that's why, as I read through the resolution, I was a little unclear. So, so basically, you know, and please, again, I'm confused. So I want to make sure that I have this right. So the resolution that we're looking at in its current form, are you saying that we're not including non-contact sports? Again, because I'm looking at the wording and, you know, I'm just a little confused. So...
No, the resolution as it written, as it is written, is the default. In terms of where I'm looking is that the default position is banning, is not having anything. And then we have to go from, you know, until October 1st. So that was both non-contact and contact sports. Now, there has, again, Mr. Vassalati is right. There have been so many conflicting signals coming from what was low-risk and no contact, and some of that changed. And I think based on what Summit County Public Health put out today at their press conference, I think we're looking at that, it's really about that fourth whereas in the resolution, where we need to come to some consensus on how we would like to move forward. I'll only say the issue of not having any of those issues has to do with, you know, like, how do we get, when we're competing, going from one location to another, you know, we have to consider issues about transportation, because those are areas of typically high spread, or we, you know, have to really thin out the people who are on a bus or a van. The other one is, you know, based on some of the issues that were brought up from the National Superintendents Organization, you know, locker room areas. And see, there's a lot of other things about equipment, our facilities, making sure that, you know, we are keeping those clean. And it isn't like, at the end of the day, it's constant every time there's a use of those facilities and/or equipment. And just to make sure that all those things are being addressed. And to be honest with you, that's for both, any sport where you're using equipment, you know, or item. So it's just making sure we can feel like we're doing, you know, the safest job possible, regardless of whether it's a contact or non-contact. So that was the default position.
Okay, so basically, the way that, okay, so thank you for that. So basically, so what this is, so what this is, that this reads in, is that we would basically be, you know, banning all non-contact and contact sports as well as the practicing of non-contact sports until at least October 1st. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. You know, so I do know that, obviously, you know, many of us, you know, talk to people in other districts. And I know specifically to cross country, our neighboring school districts just had an exposure with their cross-country team at one of the high schools. So now they've all been sort of sent back home, if you will, you know, figuratively speaking, if you will, because of the exposure. And that's where, and that's where, you know, I want to sort of begin my comment, is that control, sort of, you know, there's not just what happens within the practice environment, but there's also, you know, you can't control what other families and, you know, families of students are doing when they're not there, you know, as well as the sharing of equipment, you know, common shower areas, bathrooms, things like that, that I think make this a really, really difficult decision. You know, I think there was a comment, I think Ms. Mansfield sort of commented on this, and I'll comment on it as well. And I'm also very disappointed in the OHSAA as well. And because, you know, what the conflicting guidance really suggests here is that to a certain degree, we politicized, you know, as a, you know, as a, you know, as a state and as a nation, you know, we politicized COVID, you know. And I find that extremely disappointing because now is a time where we need sort of, you know, where it'd be helpful to have common consensus around the science. See, the conflicting guidance just sort of really kind of suggests that this continued politicization of a really sensitive topic. You know, in some of the, we keep, you know, as we talk about low risk, you know, I just want to sort of reiterate, you know, that we're not talking about the regular flu. And again, I don't want to, and I know I'm sounding like I'm on a soapbox. I don't mean to sound that way, but we're not talking about the regular flu here. You know, just today, there was another study that was released looking at, talking about myocarditis or heart inflammation that it seems to be occurring at a much higher rate in folks that have COVID as opposed to the regular flu. So almost every week, whether it's brain damage, whether it's permanent lung damage, whether it's heart damage, you know, these are all things that, you know, that vascular conditions, strokes, these are all things that we're seeing in higher numbers than with the regular flu or with other diseases, you know. And so, you know, to those of you that have, you know, that reach out and you, and sort of want to quote the, you know, well, the lethality rates are really low. Well, lethality rate is one thing, but, you know, congratulations, your child may survive, but we put them at risk for a plethora of other potentially life-altering, you know, conditions and whatnot. And so, and that's, and I think that's what this organization, this board is trying to avoid doing, is we're trying to, you know, ensure that we're looking out not just, you know, preventing, you know, possible deaths, but we're also trying to prevent potentially life-changing health circumstances for our students. When you look at the CDC guidance, you know, look at, you know, the three, you know, the three most common common conditions, you know, as relates to hospitalizations for COVID, it's asthma is number one, obesity is number two. You know, so, and we know that there are a high number of students, you know, that fall into those two buckets, you know. And so, that's where, you know, I really want to come down on, say, it's our job to really kind of err on the side of caution. As you keep saying, low risk, low risk of what? It's a risk of a lot of different items, you know, that are out here. So that's where, you know, I'm supportive of this resolution. That's why I wanted to ask the clarification questions to make sure I understood it as well. Because again, you know, and I think, Mr. Vassalati, I think you mentioned that the financial considerations, you know, of this, you know, with organized sports, college sports, you know, it's momentous, you know. I think Ohio State stands to lose, you know, over $150 million if the Buckeyes don't play in the fall. I just saw a report today that Nebraska's looking at losing $80 to $120 million. And yet, and yet, if you're looking, if you're following, you know, the current news feeds, they're very close to canceling, or at least postponing, these seasons until the spring, you know. So, and that's despite, you know, much more the way of money being brought to bear, still the health, you know, sort of outweighing the financial sort of rewards, if you will. And I echo Ms. Mansfield's comments, you know, I'm disappointed that there wasn't an option on the table of postponing these sports to the spring, because that certainly could have been an option that was on the table as well. And perhaps, and maybe OHSAA will eventually revisit that, you know. But again, I at least wanted to make sure that we sort of talked a little bit through, you know, the contact versus non-contact piece of this as well. So as this resolution is currently, you know, worded, you know, I'm in support of it. But again, wanted to make sure that those of you who are tuning in, you could hear sort of talk about the non-contact versus contact part. And I would welcome any additional comments that anybody, anyone would have on that, on that delineation.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Ms. Altrich?
Thank you. So many of my colleagues have already touched upon a lot of the things that I certainly agree with. And it is definitely a difficult decision that we have to make this evening. So I just wanted to reiterate, just based on the feedback that I've received, that this is not a discussion about the importance of sports and extracurriculars. We all realize that. So at the heart of it all is the health and safety of all involved, not only the children, the coaching team, the families. And I want to put on my nursing hat, which I rarely do in this forum, but there's just so many unknowns. And I know we keep using this word unprecedented, but there are so many unknowns. And there was a recent quote at a school board meeting in another part of the country that just really hit home to me. And I just wanted to read it. And it stated that, in the end, it'll be impossible to know if we overreacted or did too much, but it will be quite apparent if we underreact or do too little. So with that being said, you know, I am in agreement with the resolution as it aligns. as it aligns to our vote two weeks ago. If we're going to be educating remotely, um, we also, uh, should consider the safety of our scholar athletes and those involved with extracurriculars in that same context. So, um, I just wanted to share that. Um, one other thing, I know a lot of seniors are concerned about how this affects potential scholarships and, uh, you know, you know, it's, it's a new day, it's a new time, and colleges are going to also have to rethink, um, this current climate. You know, this is not something they're going to be able to hold against everyone because this is affecting the entire country. So we have to kind of think outside the box moving forward as far as how that's going to work for us. But I would imagine colleges are going to have to have some type of grace, uh, when it comes to this, uh, upcoming graduating class of scholar athletes. That shouldn't be something that's held against them, um, not being able to participate fully um, in sports this year. Um, and then also, I just wanted to share, um, about thinking outside the box. You know, these coaches are, they play such an important role as mentors to our young people. Um, and then they have the love of the sport as well. Um, but it can be a little cumbersome, you know, following those processes, uh, to make sure everyone is safe, you know, the different screenings and checks that they have to go through. Um, and it can take away a little bit, you know, from the enjoyment of the activity. So, you know, hoping that we, you know, moving forward, i- if we continue with sports, that the coaches, the teams are supported in that so that they can have a, I guess, a full enjoyment, uh, without that piece. Because if anyone knows about how children are, you know, you're asking them the same ten questions every day, there's, oh yeah, no to all of them. So I, that's something, you know, that we need to think about, uh, as well as some of the businesses in our church communities who have space, you know, when we're thinking about physical activity is very important to the health, you know, of all. So, you know, if for some reason we don't proceed, we have other places in our community. Uh, we just passed a parks levy in May, so we need to be taking full advantage, you know, of our parks, um, of other spaces that we might be able to carry out this whole activity as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry, Dr. Akbar.
Yes, um, so I, I just echo everything that everyone else said. Um, just, uh, just so you know, uh, the MAC, which is, uh, the, um, sports league or conference that, uh, both University Akron and Kent State are in, has canceled its, uh, seasons for the fall. Um, and so I think that if they're canceling it, um, just to, uh, Ms. Autry's point, the, they understand that they're going to have to recruit students differently, um, in the next year with the hope that we, we will have some type of vaccine to be able to move forward. So, uh, I think just to my comments, um, the benefits of, um, athletics is tremendous. I think that we all understand that. Um, you know, I fully support our students participating in athletics and extracurricular activities, um, such as the arts. Um, and I recall my days of running track and, uh, playing tennis, uh, on our tennis team in high school and being captain of the golf team and what it would have been like if I didn't have that final year. Um, and I know and understand that feeling that you could be having, um, because I had took a step back after reading some of the students' emails to me about, um, what that might be like. Um, but I, so I, I know firsthand the benefits of sports and extracurricular activities in this decision, um, and this time is not an ideal, none of this is ideal. I think that we all wish we were living in the ideal world and we wish we didn't have to make these type of decisions. We would love to be talking about other things, um, and moving the district forward in other ways, in other areas. However, uh, none of us asked for this and, but we are here. And we have to understand that, um, none of this is ideal or, um, where we want it to be and what we would prefer to be doing. But, uh, the Summit County Public Health, uh, to just today, uh, submitted the, uh, their resolution and had a press conference, and they specifically cited the uprise in teen, uh, COVID exposures, um, being a reason for their decision. Uh, that's the prime, um, student population, that's the prime population that we're talking about, the ones that we're concerned about. And there's a rise right here in Summit County, which is an issue I believe that we should, uh, be looking at seriously and taking seriously. Um, but I also want to say that the, this decision goes beyond just thinking about our students and the benefits that sports have on them. This decision affects our coaches, this decision affects their families, this, uh, decision affects grandparents and parents and other community members. Um, because anybody could have it, unfortunately, be asymptomatic, not knowingly passing it to other people. We have, uh, far too many students in our own district who are immune compromised, who have respiratory, uh, who are also respiratory compromised, and we need to be concerned about them as well. So as, uh, Mr. Alexander said, health and safety is going to be the paramount, um, portion, um, of my decision-making. Um, and I think that we have to be concerned about, uh, conditioning as well. We say that there's no sports, uh, we also can't necessarily put conditioning on the table either. Uh, I am willing, uh, to have a conversation to what, um, Dr. Hall stated about pulling out non-contact, low-risk sports and maybe having a separate conversation about that if there's enough will of the, the body to do so. However, I'm okay if, if that is not the will of this body, but I am willing to, to consider that specifically, um, as that I'm greatly concerned about all of our students and how this might affect each and every one of them, but also our staff and our, our family members. Uh, I'm very greatly concerned about that. And just a note about, uh, the arts that Ms. Mansfield mentioned, I, I think that for me, when you think about athletics, I, I look at athletics and I look at the band, I look at the gospel choirs, um, or choirs, I look at all of those in very similar veins as far as risk for, um, contracting the virus. And the last thing I want to do, a- as Ms. Autry mentioned, is underreact and then have, uh, a situation where there's, um, no, no point of return. And that's, that's not something that I would like to be a part of. And so I'm taking this, uh, decision very seriously. And lastly, I thank everyone, probably close to fifteen people, um, and their, their young people who have contacted me. Um, I've read all your emails, I haven't been able to reach back to everyone, but I have read every one of them. I have talked to everyone who has called, and I do hear everything that you say on both sides of this decision. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Akbar, Ms. Mansfield.
So maybe I was so resolute with the, with the school, um, the, the school going online that that decision, as, as hard as it was, I just, I felt so much more steadfast in that decision. Um, I, I've heard everything everyone says, and I, I totally agree with, with everything. And the superintendent and I had a thirty-five minute conversation on Saturday because I just needed to hear, um, you know, ways that we could make some things work. I'm, I'm wondering if anyone else has any suggestions on how we might work with those non-contact or low risk or what, whatever we're called, you know, someone. It's so confusing. Um, if, if we do have any room, wiggle room on that with, with any board members, um, they have been conditioning all summer, really since I believe May, but I'm, I'm not really sure, mine started in June, um, at, at different levels. And again, that, and they've managed to do it as, as safely as possible. We've had that going on, you know, throughout the summer. We don't have a lot of non-dark, nice months left. I can feel that weighing on my shoulders. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking about kids being able to be outside and, and getting exercise and what that does for our mental health, right? Um, and again, to the Ohio School Athletic Association and the governor's office, should their guidance change? For us, I would hope that this board would, um, you know, quickly flip so we could flip sports or do whatever, if it was at all possible, um, especially with a postponement of things to the spring. Um, if they would allow us some freedom with that and let us outside of the box that they're building that is not, does not allow for equity across the state. I mean, it just doesn't. It, it's great if you live in a small county, um, in the middle of the state, but it's not so great if you don't. And it shouldn't, our students shouldn't be penalized for that. So I, I guess that's the part that's really weighing on me is, um, that other students are going to get opportunities that ours aren't. And, and again, this is not putting health and safety aside at all. I'm just so frustrated that we're not being able to give them those opportunities where other schools are. I hate that part. So I'm struggling. So if anybody can help me, I'll listen.
Thank you. And before anyone answers to, I guess I'll offer my, uh, comments because I, I think I'm going to end in a similar place, um, Ms. Mansfield, if that's okay. Um, I, I think, like many of the folks that are around the room, so to speak, or are watching, I think we're all pretty exhausted, uh, by COVID-19. Um, uh, these are not easy decisions that we're making, uh, they're, they're, they're very tough. And our responsibility as board members, um, at least what I believe our responsibility to be and as, even as parents and as coaches, is to make the right decisions, the best decisions that we can and the ones that we feel are right for our kids. Um, I'm sure if we took a poll, all of our kids, because we'd probably answer the same way if it was a question as to what you would like to do. What we'd like to do is keep things normal. What we'd like to do is go back and play sports. We'd like to be in the marching band and, uh, we'd like to be on stage. Uh, but our decision is really to think a little bit more broadly than that and to think about the twenty-one thousand kids that we have. And again, as many of you have mentioned around the room, all of their family, their parents, their grandparents, their coaches, their teachers, the people they come in contact with and other places. Um, and so we have to think a little bit more broadly than that. And I think everyone here has said something about the importance of, of sports and extracurriculars. Um, and, and like many of my fellow board members, I played sports, if you're curious, I played soccer and I was a swimmer and diver. I wish I could say I was better at all three, but I didn't get any scholarship, so here I am. Um, but I, I love sports and I was in theater and music all throughout, uh, high school and I enjoyed every bit of it. Um, and I think we can all appreciate too, that some kids would not have showed up at school, some kids might not have graduated but for sports and extracurricular activities, right? That is sometimes what grabs a kid and pulls a kid in and makes him want to do better, uh, in academics because he's got that link. And so we all appreciate that and hear that. And I think some of the disappointment you're hearing about OHSAA and the state, uh, state guidelines that have been put out is not so much that the guidelines haven't been put out, but if you read them carefully, they are conflicting. Uh, and they do send a mixed message to us about what we, uh, who we should be listening to and, and where our priorities lie and, um, and it's difficult because again, seven of us are in a, are on a, on the hot seat, um, to make a decision for a lot of people. And again, not just the twenty-one thousand kids or whoever is participating, but everyone that they come in contact with. And that's a very difficult place to be. And, uh, as many of you have said before, I appreciate all the people that have reached out. I appreciate that they're being respectful in their dialogue and, and they're being kind and patient with us. Um, but we've had a lack of consistent guidance and that we cannot escape. And our athletics too are not intra-district, right? They're inter-district for the most part. And, and as someone pointed out earlier, uh, we don't know how safe others are being, even if we feel we're being as safe as we can be. Um, and so we do have that to consider as well. I have to give some thanks to Summit County Public Health, um, and to Donna Sotter, uh, for the guidelines that they've put out. I mean, they have been clear and consistent. Um, and they're, they've been at least the clearest and most consistent that we've received so far has been our own local guidelines and so much appreciation to them. Uh, this is still a global health pandemic and, you know, personally, I'd prefer to defer to the, to the public health professionals, as was mentioned earlier. And I agree that our colleges and universities, given what we've seen with the MAC and the Big Ten, they're going to get it, right? They're going to understand that not all districts made decisions to play sports this year, or they played them in a modified manner, or they played them intra-district rather than inter-district, or they did something, they flipped the season. Um, so this is an opportunity, I think, for us to think outside of the box and it's a teachable moment, right? And we have to ask ourselves what we're also teaching our kids by the decisions that we make and what we're advocating for and what message we're sending to them about where our priorities are. Um, I would love for us to have another discussion about low or no contact sports like golf and things like that. So I think, Ms. Mansfield, to your point, I think it's worth a further discussion, but it's also an opportunity, again, not only a teachable moment, but an opportunity for us to, to think outside of the box. And we do have a lot of coaches and, and folks that I know would never walk away from these kids regardless of whatever decision was made, that we would find ways to engage our kids and take advantage of opportunities that might exist outside of competitive sports, even if scrimmages or practices or conditioning were allowed or for low non-contact sports were allowed. There would still be opportunities for us to think outside the box, even in music and arts. I was talking to someone today who mentioned that they, you know, wanted to be able to do scripted, uh, script readings with their, with their students online. Brilliant idea. I've seen online and many of you probably have, uh, through social media, concerts and a cappella groups recording different pieces and putting them together and, and coming out with something really beautiful. And so there are a lot of ways that our kids can still participate, I think, uh, in extracurricular activities. Chess club is, as the superintendent mentioned, can be online. Uh, National Honor Society can be online. There are lots of things that we can do online. Is it ideal, as someone pointed out? Absolutely not. It's, none of this is ideal. Um, but there are opportunities for us to think outside the box a little bit, be leaders and use this as a teachable moment for our kids and maybe even for ourselves a little bit. Uh, but again, I, I kind of find myself in the same place that one or two board members, uh, have mentioned, um, that, that I'm, I'm open to a conversation about low or no contact sports. I still need to learn a little bit more, uh, on how those are defined, um, and, and make sure that, that we're following, uh, proper guidelines. I, I'm a little concerned still about the lack of sufficiently available testing, um, for our students and our staff and anyone they come in contact with. Um, but again, uh, you know, these opinions are mine and so I appreciate, you know, even the comments that are rolling in online. I hope they again continue to, to be respectful and polite because I think we're being respectful and polite. Um, so we appreciate, uh, the folks that are, that are weighing in on this. Um, with that, I, I, there is a, a, there is a resolution in front of us, but I, there also seems to be a question from at least three or so board members, uh, that may be interested in, in talking a little bit more about low or no contact. The resolution can either come up for a vote as is, it can be modified and voted on, uh, or it can be tabled for, uh, a second discussion. I'd like to open it up at this point. Uh, Dr. Hall, I know you had a comment, um, and, and if you can make a quick comment, then maybe we can check in with the board as a whole and see where we are, uh, in terms of the resolution as it stands.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Um, you know, um, my, I guess my comments were really in regard to the non-contact component, so, so I'm, I'm happy to, so, so if you want to move to that part of the discussion, now that's fine. Um, you know, uh, you know, with regard to, uh, OHSAA, um, you know, I'm in agreement that we should, you know, continue to pay attention to what they're doing. Um, however, um, you know, if, you know, what they're doing has to make sense too, right? I mean, so they were to say tomorrow, hey, you know, we decided that football is safe and it's fine, like, that wouldn't change my mind about, about football. Um, you know, so my, my grandfather used to say, you can't make sense out of nonsense. And so as long as they're not talking nonsense. And so as long as they're not talking nonsense, happy to engage and kind of discuss some of their, you know, their guidance. But so much of it thus far has been conflicting and feels very politicized to me. You know, and then I'll say the rest of my, and then as relates to the non-contact, let me just say quickly that, you know, I am happy to have a conversation about that. You know, I'm also, I'm also content with the resolution as it stands today, but again, happy to have a conversation about it. I think I was a bit more on the fence as contact sports until very recently, in fact. Yeah, I know that we've been notified of some, you know, some COVID exposures. And I know that in some of the district, other districts as well that I've reached out to, they've had, you know, specifically their cross-country teams have had some exposures and they've had to suspend activity for 14 days because of those exposure. And that's cross-country. And let me just, there are four cross-country runners who live on, who are my neighbors. They're, you know, and I see how hard these kids are working. They're out, it's 93 degrees, they're outside running in it. You know, they're up early, they're out there in the afternoon. So my gosh, you know, we definitely see, I see it personally, you know, how hard these kids are working. You know, which is why it's hard for me to say, you know, that I still just have the reservations I do even about non-contact because again, you know, even in other school districts that are more rural, they're having issues with specifically cross-country. And so I'm just wary of, you know, in my mind, I think it's just a matter of time before we have the same issues here. And I just, I really, you know, to Mr. Alexander's point, you know, our true north here has to be the health and safety of these students. But again, happy, you know, to be flexible in my thinking and to have additional conversations as relates to non-contact sports. But I, God be rather hard to convince to go the other way. But again, happy to have that conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So as we talk about the resolution or look at the resolution, I think you'll notice too in the now there for section, there still is some ambiguity in that it says any and all. And so I'd like to just open it up to the board for their thoughts on, especially for those of you who suggested maybe that we, you know, allow some flexibility or if there is some flexibility or discretion, or the way it's written, there necessarily is some. So how is that discretion going to be applied and to what? And I've noticed, I've noticed and have received some feedback too that, you know, Summit County Public Health and their guidelines. If we're following Summit County Public Health, the feelings or the consensus seems to be that Summit County Public Health would allow conditioning and practices. Mr. Superintendent or Mr. Vassalati, can either of you confirm whether Summit County Public Health would allow intra-district practices, conditioning, scrimmages outside of competitions?
Go ahead, Mr. Vassalati.
Yes, thank you, Dr. James. Patrick, the current guidelines from Summit County Public Health, and this was as of last Wednesday, August 5th, and they're the latest we've received, do allow what they call low risk, which is low contact to the OHSAA, those sports to not only practice now but compete. And then they do allow practice for the contact sports now, but they do not allow competition or don't recommend competition, I should say, for contact sports until October 1st. So that was the latest we received from Summit County Public Health regarding the low contact versus high contact.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Dr. Akbar and then I think, yeah, Dr. Akbar.
Yeah, so, I mean, as far as low to no-contact sports, I'm definitely willing to have that conversation. You know, one of my other concerns is if we do allow some sports is I'm concerned about also the limit of spectators and that being another added risk that we would need to consider. You know, there has been some conversation that was forwarded to me about, you know, volleyball specifically and how there's already been practices with sports, with spectators, you know, that being a concern or how that should be used as a way, a reason behind us moving forward. And I'm not necessarily sure if I agree with that. I think this is just a weighty thing and I'm willing to have the conversation around golf, tennis, you know, even volleyball perhaps, some of these low and no-contact sports. But I think that also means we would have to make a decision that we limit or include spectators for those sports to further limit the risk. So I think that that's another piece of the conversation we need to talk about. Conditioning is another one. And how do we ensure that the cleaning of those facilities are happening much more frequently? I know Dr. James talked about that this morning when we were in our meeting and saying that was a concern of his. And partially because that's a concern of his, it's a concern of mine as well. I would say it was a concern anyway, but it's added concern if, you know, there's some type of highlight that there, we may not be able to do it as well as we need to. So that is, those are just things I think that we need to add to this conversation. If we're going to put that on the table, we need to also add those pieces. On top of transportation, that's another thing that Dr. James mentioned. You know, how are we transporting our students, athletes to and from different sporting events and competitions and the risk that having them engaging on a bus, what does that, you know, how does that add to the concern? So I don't know if we want to continue to have that conversation, but if we do, I would say we need to also include those things as well.
Those are good points. Thank you, Ms. Autry and then Ms. Mansfield.
Yes, thank you. So it's somewhat related to what Dr. Akbar just stated. Although I am in support of the resolution as it stands, I'm open to further discussions about the low-risk, non-contact sports. But if we're going to do that, in all fairness, what should also be on the table is allowing continued practices and conditioning for the other sports as well, in all fairness. And again, putting on that nurse's hat of mine, I just want folks to understand that it just takes one person and then that can create a domino effect of quarantine in 14 days, which is half a month. So it can lead to a snowball effect and, you know, we need to make sure that we have something in place, you know, should that happen because that would cancel out a season anyway with just a few individuals affected. So just keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mansfield.
Such a great point, Diana. And I think that that's something that some of the parents who are thinking it's a good idea to have their students hop to another school to participate in a sport should think about because chances are pretty darn good that either school or sports at those facilities could easily get shut down by, you know, one person getting sick and that could easily happen. So, you know, I really appreciate that I have all of you to talk about this with because listening to all your points of view really does have an impact on my thinking and I really appreciate it. I do agree, Dr. Akbar brought up some excellent points. I think a lot of those guidelines are already in place, but I think that we should look at those. And I agree with Diana. I think that the point I was going to make is that if we've done conditioning all summer safely, can we try to keep doing that? It's that and the low contact or moderate risk, whatever we're calling it in this. I just think following those Summit County Public Health guidelines, if that's, we're basing so much of our decisions on, right? We're basing them not on our, just our gut, but we're basing things on science. And the science in Summit County is telling us that this can't happen, but this can. So I'm trying to weigh that with my cautionary side, which is, you know, protect, protect, protect. So I appreciate this discussion.
Patrick, you're on mute.
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
Oh, yeah, I was talking, maybe it's your computer. You're not me. Yeah, I agree, Ms. Mansfield, and I think that's where I was getting with some of my comments. We're pointing to Summit County Public Health. We're talking about those guidelines that they've issued, you know, especially with the delayed sports. But that's why I was asking the clarifying questions around practices and scrimmages and conditioning. But Diana brings up some good points about all of that. And I think, you know, we're talking about the possibility of another discussion, but we're also having an extended one here. So when we get to the resolution, we will need to figure out what that means because there is still some built-in ambiguity in that resolution. And as Ms. Mansfield pointed out, you know, the state has said for three weeks in a row, it's going to come out with some guidance or some announcements on sports and there doesn't, every week sort of gets kicked to the next one. We've been told this week, everything we decide today may change. And that's necessarily why there is some ambiguity in that resolution. We'll have to figure that out. Mr. Alexander, you had a question as well?
Yeah, my question is, I know we have the resolution on the table right now that we're going to possibly be voting on. Comment, my question is, can we vote on that today? I know we have a retreat coming this Friday. Is this something that we could possibly bring to the table to discuss at the retreat and then maybe come back and vote again if we want to make some amendments or adjustments to the resolution?
I think that would be possible. I can ask Mr. Pendleton to weigh in because he'll be at the retreat as well. And that is, I mean, the retreat is a board meeting.
Yeah, the board can post topics. I think the president, vice president, we're going to determine the topics and get back to the board as long as we properly notice those and notice of the intent to take action or not. We certainly can do that at a retreat.
Yeah, or we don't want to vote on it now. If we can do, if we can vote on the retreat, since it's going to be an open meeting, we have the discussion there. We bring more information to us at that time with the low risk and the high risk and what the professionals, the medical professionals are saying as far as Summit County and then kind of make, vote at that point in time if we need to, unless we need to vote right now. Up to everyone. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, yeah, just a quick comment. You know, I think Ms. Autry makes some really good points. And what I feel us doing is it feels like we're edging closer and closer towards a very slippery slope here. You know, and so I think, you know, where a lot of our heads were at early on is, you know, that the health and safety of our students is our true north and that's what we're going to stick to. And yet I sense us sliding towards a slippery slope, you know, in regards to making exceptions for, you know, for other activities. And I'm just, I'm very concerned about this. I really am. And so again, I don't know if this means that we table this resolution until Friday. You know, again, I think I've been very clear. I would, you know, in the way that this resolution has been explained, I would vote yes on it tonight. You know, but if, but if the body at large would rather wait until Friday and discuss further, I can get behind that too. But I just do, I just want to say for the record that I feel like we're starting to edge towards a very slippery slope. Thank you.
And I'm ready to vote on it as well, but as you said, that we start going backwards, slippery slope. If we're going to vote, we need to go ahead and vote tonight and get it over with if that's the case. I mean, I think we're talking about the safety and the health of our kids and their parents and the coaches and everyone else. And if we're going to vote, let's go ahead and vote.
So can we call the question?
Ms., if we can too. Ms. McKittrick and Ms. Mansfield also had comments lined up. Ms. McKittrick?
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. Just a couple of things. Recently, Ohio was numbered 12th in the nation for, 12th in the nation for COVID-positive children. That's children age zero to 18. Second, I think we're sending a lot of mixed messages. Either we say that our, again, to borrow Dr. Hall's phrase, our true north is the safety of our children. Once we start nuancing that, then we say that we're compromising their health and safety. Either, I don't know how we can say that a practice or a scrimmage is safe, but a competition is unsafe when essentially they're doing the same thing. It just depends on whether or not they're scrimmaging against their own team members or another team. So the mixed messages, I think, then we can transfer to academics. So we're going to say some in-person activities are okay, but we're keeping kids out of school for at least nine weeks because that's unsafe. So the safety versus unsafe is a message I'm unwilling to compromise on and I will always err on the side of caution for the safety, the health and wellbeing and safety of not just the students, but again, everyone that those kids come in contact with. And we've seen already that one student in what's considered a lower non-contact sport was also in what's considered a high-contact sport and tested positive for COVID. And so both those teams had to put protocols in place and suspend activity until the quarantine period was over. And so I think if we start seeing that kind of crossover, then again, we have to go back to our primary responsibility of keeping children safe. And so if we call the question, I'm ready to vote to support the resolution as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina, would you guys allow, Ms. Mansfield or, and Dr. Akbar has one final comment as well? Ms. Mansfield?
So I think that if we go ahead and vote tonight, that would be fine. And then if it's the board's will that we come back and possibly, you know, if there's any further information that we can get regarding the guidance of, again, the health professionals. I'm not a health professional. I bow to Diana's expertise, the expertise that Derek has, and I'm looking at the guidance from Summit County Public Health. I don't want to make this decision by myself. I'm unqualified to make a complete decision by myself. That's why we have this guidance, right? And their guidance is slightly different than this resolution. Now, we can err on the side of caution and I don't have a problem with that. So I think that we could go ahead and vote, but I don't think there's anything wrong with then getting a little more information and we can always amend from there. That would be my thought.
Dr. Akbar?
Yeah, so I basically agree with what Ms. Mansfield said. I would like to have further discussion about no-contact sports or low-contact sports. If there is enough on the board who's willing to have that conversation. I do agree that our primary advisor should be Summit County Public Health. I'm not as concerned with other entities who may have, you know, financial gains to make for why they would make certain decisions or not. You know, those aren't really the advisors that I want to follow because our children deserve us to make science-related decisions. And I think that one note to that is that the science-related decisions and the advice or guidance provided by Summit County Public Health is, I think, the minimum. You can always go above that. And I think that that's where we should be going. And so what we have on the table today is a resolution that goes above that guidance. And so what we have on the table today is a resolution that goes above that guidance. We should not be upset that the superintendent and the administration have provided us a recommendation above the guidance. It does not go against the guidance. It takes that guidance into consideration. And also, I just want to point out that we haven't said this enough. And I know Dr. James and I have talked about this. We, you know, when we think about Summit County totally, Akron is probably the most vulnerable out of all of the municipalities in, in our county, especially around, you know, the social determinants of health and poor health outcomes. And so if you consider all of that, I, I am still willing to have the conversation about low-contact, no-contact sport, but I do want to commend the administration for taking that into consideration with this resolution.
Yes, thank you. And I guess just my final comment then is, I, I agree and I, I would like to have further conversations. As many of you or a couple of you especially have pointed out, you know, we're pointing to Summit County Public Health. I'm not the health expert. I, you know, if we're going to follow Summit County Public Health, I almost wish the resolution would, was a resolution to follow Summit County Public Health guidelines and, and work from there. But I also, to Dr. Akbar's point, I mean, I highly commend this district, its administration, the superintendent, Mr. Vassalati, for all the work that's gone into this and working with our coaches and our athletic staff across the district, because this hasn't been easy, I'm sure. And again, I, I, you know, just echo what I said before, outside of maybe the folks that are on this call, the person that I would want to be least right now is Mr. Vassalati and the superintendent. But so I commend them for going above and beyond what Summit County Public Health guidelines have put into place. But, and, and there's no, I, I have no issues with being safer before, I'm sorry. But I do feel like what the resolution is written, I still have some questions. I'm still, I still would like to get more. It's going to come down to the roll call for me, I think. And it doesn't mean that I, I, I don't, that I, that I care too much about the health and safety or I don't care enough. It just means I, I think I'd like to have some more conversation. But, but that's just where I stand. So I believe we have had a chance. Mr. Alexander?
I was going to make a motion that we accept the resolution as is and that's it.
Thank you. We have a motion on the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
No.
Dr. Hall? Yes. Mrs. Mansfield?
No.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that discussion. I, I really appreciate everybody's input and thoughts and to everyone again that reached out to us. Thank you so much. I think if you keep an eye on us, we'll have some continued conversations. It sounds like at least this board is, is, is open to further discussion as we move forward. All right. With that then, we do have a need to recess into executive session. And so pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121.22G4 to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment, we are looking for a motion. I believe I had one from Dr. Akbar. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. Any final comments, questions or discussion before we recess into executive session? If not, we do have a couple of items that, following executive session, we will return to regular session to vote on a couple of items. So whenever, when we're finished voting, if you could all, please make sure to exit out of this meeting before we join executive session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo? Dr. Hall?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick? Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. For those who joined us to watch on our live stream and, and may not be joining us after executive session, thank you for participating. Have a good evening and we'll see the rest of you in executive session. Thank you. Good evening and welcome back to the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, August 20, 2020. We do have two items left for consideration. The first, and we'll take them in order. The first is a tentative agreement between the Akron Board of Education and the Service Employees International Union Local One employees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Mansfield, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions or discussion on this agreement of this, for this resolution? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our second item for approval is the MOU SCIU Local One MOT for the 2020-2021 bus route pick. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick and Dr. Akbar. Any comments, questions or discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, would the board permit me to ask a clarifying question on the resolution that we passed tonight? If the superintendent could just clarify, and I already have received some questions. Unless and until the board passes anything else, the resolution that we passed tonight formally delays all sports and extracurricular activities to further notice, including conferences, scrimmages, conditioning for all sports regardless of, of their contact level. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come before this board? Well, thank you again, everyone, for a brilliant conversation. I appreciate the dialogue and a good evening. I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved. So moved.
Thank you. We are here.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.